If you will. This part of the meeting, we begin each meeting with an opportunity for the public to come to the podium and speak on any subject dealing with planning that is not on the agenda. So if you wish to make a statement about something that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. And if you're going to make a statement, or anyone who's going to speak tonight, please know that you have to go to the microphone that's over there on that podium in order to speak. That's because that microphone connects to FCTV, and these meetings are televised, and that's the way the home audience is able to hear you, and they can't hear you unless you go there. When you get there, you need to give your name and the issue in which you're speaking. So, anyone who wants to speak on an issue not on the agenda? No, in that case, we'll begin on our agenda. And because I am severely jet-lagged, Madam Chair, is going to chair this meeting. Pam?
Thank you. And you'll have to forgive me if I'm a little bit confused looking at what I've got in front of me. First on the agenda, we went through the public comments, is the minutes.
Madam Vice Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of October 11, 2022, as corrected.
What about September 27?
I thought that was submitted and approved previously. I'll have to review that.
Last meeting you deferred them. Because you said you had one.
But you have those, don't you?
Yeah, you deferred them because you haven't moved them.
We just got them.
Yeah, but we've submitted them. I've done them.
Yeah, but you haven't approved them.
Oh, okay. So I also recommend approval of the minutes of 27 September 2022.
Is or as corrected, or?
As corrected.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so out of one, two, three, six of us, it's six out of six. Now, is Pam planning to be here, do you know?
I did not confirm that she was attending this evening.
Okay.
I can try to do so.
Okay. And then, on the agenda first, is the Planning Board decision. The applicant is Mary Harrington, Site Plan Review Application to Construct an Accessory Apartment Located at 12 Hakam Attack Way. We have a decision in here. Bob, are you feeling like becoming very hoarse tonight?
No, not yet. Let me just find.
You've got to find it first, right?
Okay. It should be in the folder here.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So this is 12 Hakam Attack. Okay, draft, 10/20/22, motion that the Planning Board votes to approve the application of Mary Harrington to construct an attached accessory apartment at 12 Hakam Attack Way under Article 39 of Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for a plan entitled Plot Plan Proposed Addition for Number 12 Hakam Attack Way Prepared for Mary Harrington in Falmouth, prepared by Falmouth Engineering, Scale 1 Inch Equals 10 Feet, dated July 13, 2022, with most recent revision date of September 15, 2022, as well as elevations and floor plans entitled Harrington Garage 12 Hakam Attack Way, Falmouth Mass., prepared by Longfellow Design Build, Scale 1 Quarter Inch Equals 1 Foot, dated August 12, 2022, pages A1.1 and A2.0, having a revision date of September 12, 2022, as well as existing dwelling photos with the following findings. The 26,356 square foot parcels located in the Residence B, R.B. zoning district, as well as in the coastal pond Quisic Harbor overlay district. The property contains 2,084 square foot, two-bedroom, single-family dwelling, a shed, and a paved driveway. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached two-car garage with a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit above the garage. The property will have a total of three bedrooms, two bedrooms in the principal dwelling and one bedroom in the accessory dwelling unit. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 567 square feet will be 32% of the principal dwelling, and the property will provide three parking spaces which comply with Section 240-23.I3E and Section 240-108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The Town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the Planning Board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the Board will condition its decision accordingly. The Planning Board's review does not include building code review, and the Board defers to the Building Commissioner as to issues related to the building code and zoning. The Board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw.
Madam Chairman? Can we pass with reading the rest of the conditions? They're all the standard conditions we have every time, and I think it just takes the meetings go longer and longer. There's nothing new in this.
I agree, but can we do that, Jed, in this instance? I know we're waiting for a decision.
I think for this example, you can.
Okay.
Thank you. I read them, they're all same ones we do every, every week.
Yeah, I know, our standard conditions.
Okay, so there's eight standard conditions.
So, we may want to read number six and number seven.
Okay, that's where I was getting at. Okay. Condition number six, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property about its or our public right of way, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the Building Commissioner. Number seven, the applicant shall install dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area of, at a minimum.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, please? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, so six out of six. Thank you.
I would like to add that the full, the full motion is included in the minutes.
Yes, it always is. Thank you. Next, applicant Hui, special permit application, 240-2.1-exempt uses, and a site plan review application for redevelopment of Hui's waterfront, including construction of new three-story building together with site amenities to support Hui's use located at 86 Water Street. And I want to note that we have a letter here from Catherine Bumpus, who raises some issues that we thought, most likely, even though it's out of our purview, it would be a good idea to read this into the record.
May I, if I may, just really quickly? I just want to make note that this is a special permit. You may be voting to approve this evening. Five of you, as you know, have to act on the special permit. However, one of your board members is perhaps running a little late. You may want to ask the applicant if they're comfortable, or we can just see if that's her now. Maybe?
Is it?
There it is.
Excellent.
I retract my statement, and I ask you that you-
Just in time.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Correct.
For this.
Yes. Due to the fact that our chairman was not here, she needs to recuse. So we'll wait till Pam goes by, and then I will read this. You have to understand that a lot of what is in Catherine Bumpus's letter does not fall under anything we can decide, but just to make sure that the Woods Hole community is being heard, we decided it'd be a good idea. Okay, she says, "Thank you for your time in reviewing Hui's large and complicated project. Woods Hole Community Association has concerns about this project on several fronts. As direct abutters, we are concerned about what the changes in grade might do to the historic buildings adjacent to the project. Both the community hall that we own and fire station that we maintain and operate for the town will now be significantly more downhill from the proposed grade on oceanographic property. We hope these changes in grade will be looked at very closely, and that any ill effects are mitigated promptly. During construction, we expect that all the historic buildings in the area will require building monitoring to make sure that they do not suffer. As representatives of the community, we are not sure that the new building that Hui is planning needs to be the size that is proposed to be. We disagree that the exhibition/function space needs to be on the dock, as Hui currently has exhibit function space elsewhere that functions for the organization and its visitors. We expect that the oceanographics offer of public access will be memorialized in some legal agreement with the town so that it will continue into the future." So, just so it's known that we're paying heed to the public, even though we can't put it into part of our decision.
Madam Chair, I might come in on that.
Yes.
I think this is a much larger issue. Coastal Resiliency Committee conducted a study a year and a half ago, and one of the recommendations was to have the town assign a coastal residency director to help implement some of these activities. The committee did one study along Surf Drive and Main Street. There's 13 other areas that need to have these studies, one being Woods Hole, and others that are also impacted. I think it would behoove the people of Woods Hole to encourage the town to get their position on board, because there are, there is funding available to continue with these studies. It's a much larger issue than just this project. It's the area by Stony Beach, it's the area further west of there, it's a large area. This is just one project, and they're adhering to the requirements in that study. But I think the encouragement to have the town appoint that particular person as soon as possible. As of a week ago, I was advised that it's not in its fiscal year, perhaps in fiscal '25, but there is some urgency, and I think we should encourage the town to move forward on it.
Thank you, Paul. We also have a letter from Eliza Cox, the attorney, that was, that's dated October 24, and I believe it should be read also. You agree? Or would you like to read your letter?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Eliza Cox from Nutter McLennan and Fish on behalf of the applicant, the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. The letter that we, that I submitted was after a conversation with Mr. Cornock. As the board will recall from the presentation that we put forward two weeks ago, we have sought a special permit under your exempt uses provision from the reasonable regulations that the board is allowed to evaluate for Dover Amendment projects. One of the regulations that we included in that special permit request was from the landscaping requirements of your zoning bylaw. I think there is some question under the state law whether landscaping falls within the reasonable regulations under Dover, and so we had put that forward as part of the application, just to sort of cover bases. In conversation subsequently with Mr. Cornock, he indicated that the board has also waived landscape requirements under the Site Plan Review waiver provision that was adopted at town meeting in 2021. And so all that letter does is really give the board the option of either the special permit relief that we described at the last meeting, or using the waiver provision, which I understand you do, you've used before for the landscape requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That pretty much covers everything that was in the letter.
That's right.
Okay. So, we do have a draft decision here. Hey, Bob, you want to get hoarse again?
Yeah, sure. Maybe we should get-
Oh, yeah, any other public comment? I don't, I think we closed it, though, didn't we?
I don't believe so.
We didn't, okay, so, thank you. I didn't realize that. Is there any other public comment at this time? And if you have any comment, please go up to the podium and state your name. I read your letter, Catherine.
We'll read that.
Okay.
So, I'm just, I'm sorry, I got here a couple of minutes late. I'm Catherine Bumpus. For those of you who don't know me, I'm co-president of the Woods Hole Community Association. And while we are generally in support of this project, there are a few details that have changed in the process as they've gone through permitting, and it'd be great to know that we're all on the same page with it. It was presented that the third floor of the new building would be exhibit space and open to the public, and that all the uses in the third, in the building would be water-dependent. So, these things influence the fact that you are giving them a height exemption, because if they were not happening on the third floor, or they were happening someplace else on the campus, they would not be required to come for this exemption. So I think it should be clear what the uses, though you don't permit uses, what they are saying will be happening in the building, so that we understand why they are asking for this exemption.
Thank you, because that's further from, also, from what you had said in your letter. I appreciate that additional comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Board, have any comments at this point? Because then we're going to have to close the hearing.
No.
So, may I have a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Stay. Okay, now, we can move on to the decisions.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
There's just one more item in your pack, as I'm sure you've seen it, but just for the record, we did receive a referral from the Fire Department this afternoon, indicating that they had no issues with the project as proposed.
Okay.
And, sorry, I lied when I said one more thing. I meant two. The second part would be, perhaps you just want to take some action on the special permit versus site plan review waiver, because the draft motion that we provided to you indicates that you would use the waiver provision. So if you're deciding to go the route of allowing landscaping requirements to be waived via the special permit, then we would need to modify the draft motion that you have in front of you. However, if you're comfortable with the waiver requirement as requested, I would simply indicate that maybe you should take action on that first, and then perhaps read the motion to the record.
Okay, now you've got me really confused, because the waiver is kind of like squished in.
It is. It is. And the reason that we suggested the waiver provision is because there's really not, as Ms. Cox mentioned before, there's really not clarity on whether or not you can grant the special permit for a landscaping requirement. However, you do have a mechanism to waive the requirement of the landscaping plan to be submitted, as she noted by town meeting's action in 2021. So, just to have a cleaner and more understandable process, we suggested that they seek that waiver provision, be granted by the board, that be included in your decision as included before you tonight.
So you want a separate vote now as to whether we find the waiver?
But could not that just be a condition?
It could. It's listed in your, in your decision, so it's really up to you.
But it's not written as a condition.
It's not written as a condition.
Right.
It's just written as a waiver that you're allowing.
And that's the impervious coverage waiver?
That is the landscaping plan requirement.
It's, Bob, it's right here on, there's the first page.
Oh, okay, the first one there.
And then on the second page, there's a waiver stuck in there. See it?
I see that one there.
Yeah, that's the waiver.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good point.
Right, and so, if we're, your, your motion would be that you move to have the board accept the waiver that has been requested in regard to the landscape plan.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we can discuss it and see if it's acceptable to the board.
Okay, so I'll move that we allow for the waiver for the landscape plan that's required.
Second.
Okay. Does the board have any discussion on this?
No.
Seeing no hands raised from the board, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's been passed, six in favor, zero against. Okay, so now we go back to the special permit.
So, for the record, this motion that you have before you is the site plan review process and special permit combined.
Wished.
Together, into one motion. So I apologize in advance, it is four pages, but it has a lot of very good information. And so, it essentially breaks it into findings for 240-2.1, which is the exempt uses. It also indicates all of the items that you, as a special permit granting authority, have to consider in the final page.
And Bob?
Yeah.
Jed was afraid there would be termination by Bob Leary of our town planner for having to read four pages.
So, we have, we have findings, I'm just a little confused.
Yeah.
On page one, we have the motion, then we have findings, then it goes to waivers, and we just struck that waiver, and then it goes back to findings specific to Section 240-2.1?
Correct.
Okay, so, so there's, there's no other waivers, just the findings? Okay.
You didn't strike the waiver.
We made it. We approved the waiver.
You were about to grant it, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Which is part of the decision, so I don't understand.
So I'll still read, I'll still read that into the record.
The whole thing.
Yeah, okay. Okay, draft, 10/24/22, motion that the Planning Board vote to approve the application of Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, Hui, under Article 39, Site Plan Review, and grant a special permit pursuant to Section 240-2.1 exempt uses of the zoning bylaw to construct a three-story building located at 86 Water Street, also shown on Assessors Map 49A, Section 02, Fossil 00K, Lot 001, as depicted on the plan entitled Seawater Project, Isolent Dock Replacement Site Plan Review, prepared by WSP Maritime Engineer, 37 Sheets, dated July 15, 2022, with scales, as well as elevation and floor plans entitled Seawater Project New Waterfront Building, prepared by Payette Associates, and 7 Sheets, dated August 25, 2022, Scale 1/8 inch equals 1 foot, as well as a landscaping plan, a lighting plan, a stormwater runoff analysis and operation and maintenance plan, and a traffic study with the following findings. The applicant, Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute, is applying to the Planning Board for a Site Plan Review under Article 39, and a special permit under Section 240-2.1 exempt uses to allow the complex for waterfront access to exploration and research, Seawater Project, which includes the replacement of their existing dock, the removal of several existing buildings on the property, and the construction of a new three-story adaptable and resilient waterfront building. Pursuant to Section 240-2.1 exempt uses of the Town zoning bylaw, the applicant shall be subject to the regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements found in the Town zoning bylaw, unless by special permit the Planning Board grants relief from these dimensional regulations as applied to exempt uses, subject to the criteria set forth in Article XL12, special permits. The applicant is seeking special permit relief for building height, onsite parking requirements, front setback for an electrical transformer, and the total impervious conditions. Further, relief is also sought from Article, was it 24? Landscape requirements of the zoning bylaw through a waiver of the Site Plan Review requirements. The 2.9, the 2.92 acre property is located within the public use zoning district, the floodplain overlay district, and the windborne debris overlay district. The property consists of a developed waterfront and contains several buildings individually known as the Smith Building, Bigelow Laboratory, Isolent Laboratory, Alvin High Bay, Smith Connector, and Flume. The Isolent Laboratory is, straddles the existing bulkhead and is located partially on the, on the pile-supported pier portion of the site, and partially on the solid fill portion of the site. The new dock will replace the existing dock in place and in kind as a pile-supported structure, essentially within its existing footprint. There are minor bulkheads alignment modifications proposed to enhance dock operations, improve berthing positions, and facilitate vessel loading, unloading, and navigation. In addition, the test well will be relocated under proposed conditions to the southwest portion of the reconstructed dock, thereby providing access to deeper water. Lastly, the dock is designed such that it can be raised an additional 1.5 feet in the future to accommodate sea level rise. Meanwhile, the Isolent Laboratory, Alvin High Bay, Smith Connector, and the Flume will be removed and replaced with a new 44,667 gross square foot three-story waterfront building that will be built entirely landward of the bulkhead behind the Smith Building and outside of the existing FEMA VE velocity zone boundary. The first floor of the new building will be raised to approximately, approximately elevation 10.5 feet. Now, D88, a dry floodproofing system, will be employed to protect the lowest functionality dependent levels of the building from flooding. The first floor of the new building is designed to enable the floors to be elevated in additional 1.5 feet in the future. Waivers, Section 240-115, landscape plan required to waive the requirement that a landscape plan be submitted with the applicant, with the application for a site plan review. Findings, specific to Section 240-2.1 exempt uses of zoning bylaw. The applicant is seeking special permit relief pursuant to Section 240-2.1 exempt uses of the zoning bylaw from the building height limit and the onsite parking requirements, the front setback for an electrical transformer, and for the total impervious coverage. Building height, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow the new building to exceed the building height limit in the public use zoning district of 50 feet. The proposed building height is 55.2 feet from the calculated mean grade, exceeds the zoning maximum of, by 5.2 feet, to allow the high bay to be elevated an additional 1.5 feet in the future. The high bay space must continue, must continue, maintain the necessary crane pick heights to functionally accommodate working and maintenance on the underwater vessels, even with the additional future 1.5-foot increased floor height. Parking, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow a reduced number of parking spaces on the property. The applicant is proposing to strip, stripe nine onsite parking spaces, which is the same number as existing conditions. The applicant has worked to relocate many of the existing parking spaces away from the busy Water Street area to other locations that are better served to accommodate the demand and the associated traffic. With the reduction of building square footage on the property, the recalc, relocation of departments off of the waterfront and onto Hui's Quisic Campus and Hui's shuttle, the proposed parking remains adequate for Hui's demand. Front setback, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow a new electrical transformer to be located within the 25-foot front yacht setback. The applicant is working with Eversource to cite the new electrical transformer, and one of the proposed locations would put it in front of the existing Bigelow Building, approximately 10 feet from Water Street. Provided the utility company allows it, Hui would agree to implement screening measures to help minimize the visibility of the transformer within the setback. Impervious coverage, the applicant is seeking a special permit to allow relief from the overall impervious coverage limit of 70% by structures, paving, and parking, as the proposed conditions show, 92%, although the project will only slightly reduce the amount of impervious coverage, reduction of 188 square feet. The project does include relocating and formalizing the proposed green space on the site, and designing it in a way to potentially allow guests access and views of the working waterfront. A special permit granting authority shall grant a special permit only upon its written determination that, that the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town, in view of the particular characteristics of the site. Findings, specific to Section 240-216, special permits of the zoning bylaw. A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for proposed use. The Planning Board finds the size of the site to be adequate. The proposed project includes a number of improvements to this 1,000, 127,224 square foot property focused on improving circulation, increasing safety, consolidating buildings, and adapting to anticipated sea level rise. B, suitability of the site for the proposed use. The Planning Board finds the site suitable for the proposed use. Access to the ocean is critical for the applicant's mission and ongoing study of the ocean environment. The proposed project will make significant improvements to the site, and thus will help Hui maintain its position as a leader in ocean research. C, impact on traffic flow and safety. The Planning Board finds the impact on traffic flow and safety to be acceptable. The project includes a vast improvement to the circulation on the pier by removing a number of buildings and moving the new building landward. Due to the unique operations on the pier, maintaining safety is very important to the applicant, and the proposed project achieves that goal. D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The Planning Board finds no impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The proposed project moves the new waterfront building toward Water Street, opening up the views of the waterfront, and includes a more formalized landscaping area that is anticipated to allow public access. E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water, and drainage. The Planning Board finds the method of sewage disposal, source of water, and drainage to be acceptable. The property is served by the municipal sewer service, municipal water service, and will improve the existing drainage system as part of the project. Seven, adequacy of utilities and other public services. The Planning Board finds a site to have adequate- The planning board finds a site to have adequate utilities and other public services. The property is served by municipal electric, telephone, cable, and internet infrastructures. G, the effect of the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. The planning board finds no effect on the supply of affordable housing in town. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds the application for a site plan review and special permit for the complex for waterfront access to exploration and research Sea Water Project will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter in that the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to section 240183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for occupancy of this new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the street opening permit. Three, pursuant to section 240221 of the zoning bylaw, this special permit shall last three years from the date it is granted. A substantial use therefore has not, if a substantial use therefore has not sooner commenced except for good cause.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a couple of simultaneous seconds here.
We're here.
It's been moved and seconded. Does the planning board have any discussion? This is a combined vote, special permit and, yeah, the other one.
And site plan.
Thank you, site plan review. You're not that tired. Is there any discussion on the planning board before we take a vote? Nope? Okay. Please remember that the special permit requires a supermajority, which is five votes of the board, and Charlotte is recused, so we need at least five positive votes out of the six eligible. So, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Oh, we've got it, six out of the six eligible. Excellent. So, there obviously are no recusals, I mean, recusers there, but no abstentions. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you very much.
Quite welcome.
Thank you.
And I know a number of people will be leaving. We've got to continue our meeting, so if you're going to chit chat, please take it around the corner or outside. Thank you. So, next, we have planning board meeting, our public meeting slash planning board decision. The applicant, Thomas Griffin, site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment located at 46 Wheelhouse Circle. Is there any comment from the staff?
Other than at the last meeting, there was some discussion about septic capacity, and you asked the applicant to straighten all that out with the health department. They have done so, and we've provided to you in the packet for this evening the referral from the health department indicating that there's no issue onsite with the septic. And so, based on that, we've provided a draft motion for your consideration.
Is there discussion that you wished to have before we do the draft motion? Any concerns further to what we had last week? Okay, so we need the reading of the draft motion, which was in the new material that we got, I think, wasn't it?
Nope, it's dated 102422.
Okay, oh, yeah, sorry. Somebody else want to take a turn reading? You could Bob's voice.
Let's see, no, I'll do it if I can find it.
It's in your packet.
Okay. I've got everything all over the place.
That's where I am, too.
Okay, and this is only a page and a half, so. Okay, draft, 102422. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Thomas Griffin to construct an attached accessory apartment at 46 Wheelhouse Circle under Article 39, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan Prepared for Thomas Griffin of Number 46 Wheelhouse Circle, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by J.E. Landers-Carley, P.E., Civil and Environmental Engineering, scale 1 inch equals 30 feet, dated August 10, 2021, as well as floor plans and existing dwelling photos with the following findings. The 85,950-square-foot lot is located in the agricultural AAAGAA zoning district and in Zone 2 wellhead protection area. The property contains a 4,522-plus-or-minus-square-foot, five-bedroom, single-family dwelling, a detached accessory structure, and a paved driveway. The applicant is proposing to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit with a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. Is that detached? With one, oh, with one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The property will have a total of six bedrooms and a five-bedroom principal dwelling and a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit. The proposed accessory dwelling unit at 759 square feet will be 17% of the principal dwelling, and the property will provide adequate parking spaces which comply with section 24038 I3E and 240108 of the zoning bylaw respectively. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the board will condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers the building commission as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of findings pursuant to section, to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Are there any conditions that are different from the standard?
No, sir.
Okay, so all conditions are standard with the current bylaw.
Second?
Okay. Is there a discussion among the board members after you've heard this decision? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I wish to point out with the passage of the two tonight, we now have 47 accessory apartment dwellings passed in this town since the inception of the bylaw. So, we're making progress. We're going on now to 237 Old Main Street.
Pat, if you don't mind, I just want to tell the applicant that they, what they have to do now.
Please, go ahead.
So, I'm going to write up the decision, finalize it tomorrow or the next day, and then I'll send it to you, and you're all set. We'll sign off on the building permit application, so you're all set for that.
So, you want us to read the decision?
You already did.
That's the old one. That's the one we just did.
Oh, that's the old.
They were sitting there wondering what's next. They're done.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I thought it was...
Yeah, we're talking about wheelhouse.
Yeah. They don't know, that was good.
Okay, this is 237 Old Main LLC. And Kevin Clower.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had previously submitted a slightly revised site plan that, I believe, just addressed the board's comments and the engineering staff's comments relative to drainage. I think we cleared up any confusion over landscape walkways, and I don't believe there's anything really different on the plans other than addressing those comments. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have.
It also should be noted that, as we requested, you have submitted an extension on the time deadline.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Wait, aren't we, this is a draft motion for tonight, right? So, we're ready to do this right now?
Yes, okay. Thank you. I'm getting confused with all the pieces.
I get them confused all the time.
All we need to do is read this when we're ready to go, correct?
Right.
I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a quick summary. In your packet is the latest planning, or the engineering review on the project. There were some outstanding comments. We've ironed those out with Mr. Borselli, and that information is also included in your packet. And based on the engineering comments, we did modify conditions four and five. That's why you have a new version in your packet for tonight, highlighted at the top with today's date. Those two conditions essentially just address the comments from the engineering division related to drainage for the, related to garage roof and the patio and porches.
Where is that? There it is, okay.
A lot of paper tonight, folks, I apologize.
We also have a letter here that we don't know that we had, but...
There's also the draft, or the letter that came in in between those two meetings. You may want to just highlight that.
Okay, do you want anything said on this, or just understand that there is a letter in regard to this from Robert Young and Robert, oh, Robert Young and Lynn Young, 14 Millstone Street, North Falmouth, and they're objecting to so many developments going on in North Falmouth.
Kevin, I'll give you a copy. I got a copy from zoning. Thank you.
Noted for the record. So, with that, with the draft motion that you have before you tonight, planning staff has no more further comments and recommends approval of the project.
Okay, Bob?
Can we address the comment?
Yeah, I'd like to address the comments, too.
Go ahead.
Well, they're asking us to put the brakes on it, and that's not within our purview. How you put the brakes on it is you go to town meeting with the new bylaw and you change the bylaw. We don't have arbitrarily the right to just put the brakes on development. So, if people don't like what the bylaw is doing, you need to amend it and take it to town meeting, and town meeting has the authority to do that. We don't arbitrarily get to make those decisions. So, I know that's what you're implying here, but if you really feel strongly, you need to go to town meeting and get an amendment and go through the process. Does that pretty much, you guys agree?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't do anything about it.
That's basically what the zoning allows.
And on some of these things that they're talking about, they're specifically part of initiatives that we've been trying to do for housing and working for years to do. So, if they don't want us to do them, they need to change the bylaw.
Well, I think they're mostly all 40Bs, so that's state...
Which is really hard to do for us to change.
If anything, I know that.
So, that would be a state process?
And the other thing, though, I just bring up, if, in fact, if the proposals that we have seen for some developments actually get approved, I think in particular, I don't know whether Kimco's is alive, but the numbers alone on that units hits the production plan for units and stops 40B if that project gets approved. Isn't that correct?
For a period of time.
For a period, for a couple of years.
Yes.
So, the best way to stop all these little things all around town is to approve the ones, Mr. Cod, the things where we want the housing, and get it approved and get it in the housing production plan, because as soon as we get to, is it 56 or 60 units per year?
76.
76 units per year, and that'll get us two years or three years to slow things down. So, there's two ways to do it. Get approved what we are, get in the pipeline, or change the bylaw. Well, we can't change 40B. That's something we can't do.
You could try, but I don't think you would succeed.
It's tilting at windmills, but, so the only way to slow it down is, the bylaw we're working on our, Mr. Cod.
Yeah.
See, you could use that, but it's shortcut words.
Well, it's a shortcut way.
Yeah, thanks for addressing that, Jim, because I just want people to know that we're just doing what we are able to do. We can't change the bylaws by ourselves, and that we are, we do listen. So, I just want that to be clear, that we do take these letters seriously, and we do take what people say into consideration. But what Jim said is how things have to happen if we, if you really seriously want it changed, because I agree with you, there's some, to me, some egregious development that's gone on in some of the villages, so, but I got to read a motion to approve one, so.
Could I just add to that? What Jim said is absolutely true, that 40B is a state law, we can't change it, it's not up to us, who we elect as our representatives, that could make a difference, but it's not our purview, the things that we can do. This board is supposed to make development work for the town, not prevent development, but make it work for the town. And the board has tried to do that in a couple of different ways, so that we can build affordable housing but have it look good. So, we passed the accessory dwelling unit law, and we are very pleased to see that it's being used in increasing numbers every single year, and those units have to look as if they were existing units to match the appearance of the house they're either attached to or near. So, a lot of it has to do with, how does it look? Not just what is it, but how does it look? We have, are using design guidelines that we approved, I think, a year and a half ago now, so that if, when things are built, even if they're 40Bs, to the extent we can influence them, and the Kimco project downtown, anything that comes before us for a site plan, we get to say whether or not that's in harmony with the existing character of the town. So, yes, we may not want all this great density, or want it the way it's coming, but to the extent we can harmonize it with the town as it is and as we love, the board tries to do. So, we've got the design guidelines, we're working on being sure that we are, be able to enforce those. We're not insensitive to the need.
Yeah, we're trying to do low-impact increase in housing so that it is, we're not hit with a hammer every time.
Right.
So, okay.
I just wanted, just, all these things here that are way out in other areas are exactly what we don't want. We, in our, our planning, in our guidelines, we wanted to put all these as much as possible where we already have public transportation and sewer systems, and that is what our bylaw, that's what we've been working on, so we're in agreement, they don't belong here. But until we get 40, 40B slowed down, and the only way I know how to do it is approve, get the housing production plan, it's really the only thing we have. We are in agreement, our whole planning is to stop these things.
I can just interject, Mr. Fox, I just want to point out, this is not a 40B.
Right, well, we're talking about a letter.
Yep.
With lists, all these, most of them are.
No, I understand, I just don't want to lose the...
Well, understood.
Well, and your proposal is for actually, what, three or four units, it's not...
Yeah.
Right, it's not for one of these...
But that's under the condo bylaw conversion, which is also one of the things that is in our, if you would go into our, our local comprehensive plan, accelerating the condo conversion part was part of our plan and approved by the town. So, I mean, we're in favor of that aspect of it, have been for a long time.
So, Bob, you want to get on to it?
Okay. Draft, 102522. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of 237 Old Main LLC to convert an existing dwelling into four dwelling units and construct a detached four-car garage with storage located at 237 Old Main Road under Article 39, site plan review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Proposed Site Improvement Plan for Number 237 Old Main Road Prepared for Brad Hanley in Falmouth Prepared by Falmouth Engineering, Scale 1 Inch Equals 10 Feet, dated June 27, 2022, with most recent revision of September 29, 2022, Sheet 2 of 3 only, as well as elevation and floor plans entitled 237 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, Mass., Prepared by Lauren O'Neil Residential Design, Scale on Plan, dated September 8, 2022, with note historic submission approvals Sheets A1.1 through A2.2, as well as drainage calculations and photos with the following findings. The 39,894-square-foot lot is located in the residential BRB zoning district, as well as in the Coastal Pond-Rans Canal overlay district. The property currently contains a 3,426-square-foot building with two paved parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing single-family dwelling into four dwelling units, construct a detached four-car garage with storage, and expand the existing parking from two spaces to 14 spaces, 10 exterior spaces, spaces, and four garage spaces. Units 1 and 2 will be three-bedroom units, and units 3 and 4 will be two-bedroom units. The town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned site plan, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments, and the board will conduct its, condition its decision accordingly. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board defers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, it's just, is four and five the only ones that are different?
In addition to that, number two. Number two is a standard-ish condition, but with a minor change.
So, I'll read conditions two, four, and five?
Correct.
Okay. Condition two, the applicant shall post the required bond for the driveway permit application on file with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Four, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights away, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the... rights away, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Five, all garage roof stormwater runoff shall be diverted to the dry wells, and all runoff from the proposed porch roofs and patios shall be infiltrated appropriately.
Okay, is there a second? Discussion from the planning board on the motion? All in favor, signify. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. You?
Thank you very much.
And now, the next one. I'm not quite sure whether it's pronounced Nika or Nika. Kevin, how is this pronounced? Nika or Nika?
Nika.
Nika.
It's my daughter's.
Well, that was my feeling, that that's how it was going to be pronounced, so thank you.
No matter what I said, it wasn't going to be right, so I'll let him answer it.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I am before you representing Nika LLC, the owner and developer of this property. We worked before you guys a few weeks back, there've been some changes to the plan in the intervening term. We are currently scheduled to be back for historical on next Tuesday, November first, and we have our first meeting with the zoning board, which was scheduled for some time ago but continued until this Thursday, the twenty-seventh. So we did make some modifications to the plan, keeping the driveway to serve the two front units entirely within the lot of two fifty-nine. The driveway accessing two sixty-three is located across a right-of-way that runs across the abutting parcel. The buildings have changed slightly, largely in response to historical's plans, but the general, the overall design of this project has remained the same. The concept has remained the same. They're proposing four duplexes in the business zone portion of the property. Each of those will have three bedrooms, and then a single-family home at the, an rear property, which is currently two sixty-three, and that would have four bedrooms, so we'd be looking at a total of three, six, nine, twelve, sixteen bedrooms on site. Septic plan has been provided, which addresses that. And really, I'd be happy, along with the engineer and the architect, to address any questions that the board might have, and take it from there.
The board have questions or comments? I think you responded to our original comments pretty well, just by cursor and looking at it.
So I'll address the engineering comments and the comments of the board, so...
We work on the elevations as well.
You have to come up there so that they can hear you out in TV land.
We did, to Greg's point, we did make a number of changes to the elevations, the exteriors, that's really more relevant to historical, because before them, it was really in response to historical's comments. This, of course, is site plan review, so there is a design review aspect of it, but there were some changes to the elevations as well. But again, those changes were largely in response, or seeking to respond to comments from historical.
How about the board? Got any questions, comments on this? Or you want a few more minutes to look at it?
It appears a difference in new comments, twenty-three and twenty-four, and I wonder if the staff would like to speak to them.
You sure can. So twenty-three from the engineering review, and I'll just read it for the record. Has the applicant considered connecting the driveway for the dwelling labeled C one to the driveway for the front four units, so all five units would use one driveway? This would reduce impervious surface and eliminate one driveway connection, or, yes, and eliminate one driveway connection to Old Main Road. This is not required, only a suggestion.
I think it's been considered. I don't think it's necessarily off the table, but this is the preferred design.
What was your thinking on two driveways, anyway? The thinking, not perhaps yours, but whoever thought of it?
I'm getting the engineer.
One of them's an easement that's already, it's accessible to the second lot that isn't, I think, landlocked, right? So that one that is for the last, the single-family house, that one is already there. That easement is already there to grant access to that lot.
But that easement lot, that easement driveway could have been used also.
It can't be used for the front lot at all.
The easement only provides access to the rear portion, which is two sixty-three. It's very specific that it's for access to two sixty-three.
Because of the different zoning, one's residential, one's commercial.
Bad to curtsies.
Yeah.
And I believe the comment from the engineering review perhaps is referring to the driveway that is being provided for two fifty-nine? The question being, why not just use the two fifty-nine driveway to connect it to sixty-three?
I think there is an existing easement there, there is an existing path there, and, you know, it offers a little more privacy to the single-family home in the rear.
Thank you.
So question, or, comment number twenty-four, I'll just read it to the record. How was the B three slash RB zoning line determined? A review of record zoning maps indicate that this should be one hundred and twenty-five feet from the property line. There is no measurement on the plans, and it scales at approximately one hundred and thirty-two feet from the property line. We defer to the planning board if this information should be supplied and if a revision to the plans is required.
I will note that I do believe that would be under consideration for the zoning board of appeals, because they are issuing the use, or the permit for the use of the site. I believe that that would likely be beyond the purview of the planning board, but it is an interesting question.
Madam Chair? Does it have an impact? Because it looks like it's a really big setback there anyway, so isn't kind of a moot point?
Actually, it's quite the opposite. So the dashed line essentially cuts right across the back end of the duplexes?
So it affects the front property, not the back property?
Correct.
Okay.
So I can let Mr. Santos speak to that, but in the event that there wasn't, there did need to be a revision to that line, I'm not aware of a one hundred and twenty-five-yard designation. I'm not arguing with Mrs. Sluter, I'm just not aware of where that designation comes from. I believe it was done via an overlay, which is how they've typically handled these things in the past. But to the extent that there is a one hundred and twenty-five-yard designation, which, if we have to accommodate that, there can be some minor changes to the location of these two buildings and even the width of these two buildings to accommodate that. To the extent that this board were to vote to approve a site plan review, and there were some minor changes, would of course, would of course have to come back and modify, depending on the nature of those changes, perhaps it's administratively, perhaps it does require review of the board, but, you know, any changes we have to make to the plan in response to zoning or historical will, of course, have to be approved by this board as well.
Do you have a hearing date for zoning board of appeals?
We're opening up our hearing on Thursday, this Thursday. We haven't opened this hearing yet, because as that date was approaching, we made some changes to the plans relative to the driveways and locations. So rather than start with a plan that we knew we weren't going to be moving forward with, we requested a continuance. So it hasn't been opened yet, it's supposed to be open this Thursday.
The other comment that I think is worth noting and discussing is number seven, actually it's number seven and number nine from the engineering referral. It refers to specifically the stormwater permit. So if you're unfamiliar now with new changes to the stormwater regs, the town, if an applicant disturbs more than an acre of property, then they are subject to a stormwater permit, which is more comprehensive in nature. Our understanding is that that application happens beyond the permitting, so after they're done, the applicant's done seeking this permit from site plan review, from the zoning board of appeals, and from historical, they then go to the engineering division to file that stormwater permit, if they are subject to it. And so comment number seven and comment number nine refer to that, and essentially indicate that the applicant should indicate whether or not they're disturbing more than an acre of land, and I guess, in essence, get started on that permit, because it, my understanding, it's a lengthy process.
But it reads here, it says it appears that less than an acre will be disturbed.
But they're not, they're not certain. The engineering division's not certain.
And Jed, that might be worth a further conversation, just between you and I, because understanding what the definition of disturb is, because we have an existing house on the front lot, so I think just for future endeavors, it would be helpful to know what exactly we mean by things like that.
Right.
We have an email from Scott.
Yeah, that would be...
Application that defines it, that I can send to him.
Oh, that'd be really helpful. And then I can share that with Mr. Santos, and he can just confirm that.
So they did, they did their review based on it not being an acre. And they just want to know if it is an acre. So it probably won't change anything, it's just determining the fact that his review's here.
How would that be determined? Are they now responsible for getting a survey?
We have a survey.
Right, and the applicant would be responsible to determine that.
But I think we'd need to, you know, I think we need to understand what disturbance means relative to an already developed parcel.
Yeah, it shouldn't be something that the engineer can't do, from what he already has information, so... But I'll send you that information, you might have to remind me.
Not a problem. What's that, what's that old line? Depends on what your definition of is, is?
Okay, well, this is site plan review that we have. And staff said if we're satisfied with what we're seeing, we can direct them to prepare a positive motion for our November first meeting. I don't know whether everybody feels satisfied with what has been presented tonight, or they feel that there should be more...
We have, we have nothing as far as how the buildings look.
We submitted plans?
Yeah, we did. We had a...
No, 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 I'm saying, we can't dictate anything.
No, we can't.
Yeah, so I'm just...
Landscaping?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just the landscaping, so I just want to say I hate the look of the first building. I just, I just don't think that's an appropriate look for Main Street, to have two garage doors and a driveway right there on the street. I just...
John?
Wouldn't get my vote.
Before we vote this, should we get an answer from the applicant about one driveway or two driveways?
This is my field.
And did we get a referral from the fire department? Would they have a preference, one way or the other? I don't, I haven't been to the site, so I don't, I don't know, I can just write the document, but you said they're considering, I'd like to have an answer before we...
Well, the proposal is for, is for two driveways, that's, that's the preference. I think it provides more, more privacy to owners, both on the front lot and the owners of the rear lot.
How about the owner with the easement? Is there a home there?
I mean, it's, there's an existing easement on that property that grants access to that back lot.
On that property, is there a home?
I just imagine there is, but I, but there's an existing easement that allows for access to the back lot.
I hear that part.
Do you feel some discomfort at this point?
I have, personally, I'd have to go look at it, I haven't looked at it. I, looking at a drawing, I can't tell what's better for the...
I'd like to raise a point. That easement's going to stay there regardless if you have that driveway or not, and they can't use the easement for the front two properties, so it's kind of, it is what it is.
Is the easement currently paved or stoned, or?
There's a gravel driveway that exists.
And is that the way you would plan to leave it, or you're going to pave it, or?
Imagine we'll pave it.
Okay, thank you.
But easements are subject to improvement. An holder of an easement does have the right to improve the way with an easement.
My problem is, too, that the landscaping is sort of shown, but it's not detailed as to what to expect. We've got little green blobs that indicate trees, arborite, I don't know what. We've got proposed landscape bed, what's going to be in the landscape bed? Is it going to be grasses? Is it going to be grass that needs to be mowed? There's no detail for the landscaping, that definitely...
There's, there's a table that...
I think there is in this chart.
Yeah, there's a...
I think it tells what size they are.
Yeah.
And their number.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
They specify them.
Okay, so there are a lot of plantings in there that will look quite nice, it appears.
At least they'd say what they are.
Yeah.
I'm not coming to what they look like, they, they do say what they are.
The intent is to design an attractive project.
I would assume so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the goal. We have no intent in planting things that aren't going to survive or, or aren't going to look nice.
It's their eastern red cedar. That's what it says.
I, I see that, yeah. But I couldn't tell you what it is. It says it grows to five to seven feet, five to seven feet tall. And then there's going to be existing fence that will remain, segregating the two. So it's a question whether the board feels comfortable enough to direct staff to do a positive motion for our November first meeting. And presumably Jed will figure out, and Melinda will figure out answers to any open questions before then.
I would suggest, considering the fact that the applicant is also before the historical commission that same night, that perhaps you, if you're comfortable, you can direct a positive motion, but perhaps that be read, if all things work out, into the record on November twenty-second, to give a little bit more time to make sure that the zoning board of appeals hearing is open, the historic application is heard, et cetera. And then we can finalize our process, or your process, I should say.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but that makes me feel a little more comfortable.
I just want to expand on Bob's question. He, you basically said that we are not doing a design review here, this is only a site plan review.
Yeah.
Is that the case? We have no design review here?
I mean, you can certainly make suggestions, but because it's a historic district...
Right. But I'm just thinking going forward, a business property, do we do design review on it, or we just, or if we only defer to it's historic? I'm just pressing, I'm thinking precedent going on.
My understanding...
Because he made a comment, I don't know what it is, I'm looking for you to guide us.
Sure. My understanding is that you do have the authority to have a design review.
You do get to make your comment, is my point.
However, it's complicated in this case, because...
I know, because it's historic, and they may override it. But it was a business property, and it's kind of a by right thing in the business property, but the only thing we do get to do is site plan and design review, so that's still in place, it hasn't gone away. You said it did, I wasn't sure, I was confused. But we defer because it's historic, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah.
I just need to straighten that going forward.
Could I just add to that?
Sure.
Site plan review very definitely includes design review, absolutely, and there's no way we should be relinquishing it. And if we decide we're deferring it to the historic commission, why would we not send it forward with our comments?
Right.
To help them do what they're doing? I think that is an added reason for us to say what we think of the design. And now I will say what I think of the design.
Okay.
This looks like, when you look at the elevations, nicely drawn up, good draftsmanship and so forth, but it still is a very standard, new-looking condominium. That's how condominiums look. And that's not the way Old Main Street looks, it's not the look that they have. The option here on this site, of how then do you fit this number of buildings or buildings this size on the site, and manage to have them look as if it would present a somewhat federal-looking gable, side entrance, any one of the, the historical looks to this, how would you get that on that site? That's why you pay an architect. And this architect really doesn't appear to have made an effort to make it fit in on Old Main Street. And maybe I'm landing too heavily on it, because I live in North Falmouth, but it really is changing the look of that stretch of historic Old Main Street. So I would be very happy to see this delayed on any kind of decision here, and to have...
So you could do get to make your comment.
The unit, the unit behind that is, is nice looking.
Yes, it is. They could have switched them, and see what they can do to come up with it. This really isn't, isn't what we would like to see there.
The architect is here this evening, so we'll make sure we discuss your comments. I'm sure they'll come up...
I would like to hear what he had to say, sure.
For the record, I'm Greg Serunian, Principal of ResCom Architectural. So we did drive around, we do a lot of work in Falmouth, we're located in Bourne. We looked around in that area and looked for similar architecture. It says it was a tricky site with the garage location, and trying to get things positioned. From the first historic meeting, there were some suggestions that we took into consideration, and this iteration before you took into that, some of their comments. So, you know, I guess what I'm hearing tonight is you don't like the symmetry, that it looks too repetitive.
Well, it looks like it should be in a development shall at North Carolina, as opposed to North Falmouth or Old Main Street.
Well, I mean, there's projects right down the street that look very similar to this.
Yeah, and how old are they? Are they not from the eighteen hundreds?
No.
And if they're forty Bs, there's another issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think they were forty Bs.
So.
But again, I'm not, I mean, I'm, we're here to work with you and take your, your comments and try to make this.
It's like I said, the one behind it is really nice looking. I, I would like to see that on the street as opposed to the one that is on the street.
Garage is on the side instead of the middle? Can you reverse the garage doors and bring them out from the back and put windows on the front to make it look?
Again, it's a, it's a site planning. I mean, from a design standpoint, you know, architecturally, that's possible. But, you know, we have to have room and setbacks for driveways and space. But there may be some things we can do to, you know, change the look of this and, you know, possibly move one of the garages. I mean, I'd like to probably go up to Historic and get their comments.
Or find a way to have the garages not directly facing the street.
Well, I think one might be possible. I don't think we could get both, just given the, the width of that lot. But it could be possible for one, which I think that could help because then it sort of makes it not look repetitive.
I'm trying to recall that stretch of buildings right now with some detail and what buildings you could be referring to that this would look like and look as if it fits in. And I don't.
Maybe it's probably worth when we go to Historic to have some pictures in the neighborhood.
It, it, he, they do. They have shingles. The materials are all, looks like the right materials, the windows and everything. It's really the garage. And, you know.
Yeah, what Historic had asked was to, you know, break it up, have some dormers.
But from the little bit of development I've done, not having two garage doors, one from the back, you so, you don't have both garage doors coming up as you're seeing the city. It would, it would change that use. It might, the homeowners might even like it better if they didn't have to share the, the entrance to the front. See if you could work something out. I think that's your.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can come up with something that the board will like.
Okay.
I'm sure when we go to Historic, they're going to have their comments.
Well, they're, you're probably going to get a harder time from them than from us.
All right.
Thanks.
Paul and Pam, do you have anything?
I do have a point. I just wanted to look at the story.
I just absolutely agree that this two garages, I mean, I don't believe that back during the time that the original buildings were there, I don't, I don't recall seeing anything like the, in historic districts. And I think it's a very unattractive. And it doesn't fit in the, the general.
I just think many historic buildings had long buildings with ten stalls right in the front yard for the horses. So be careful with that. The predecessor to a garage was horse stalls and they do exist in a lot of commercial buildings in the front yard.
They may, but not.
This is a residential neighborhood and that's a residential thing. It's not, you keep calling it commercial.
It's own.
It's own business.
I'm sorry. I thought it was zone business.
It is zone business.
That may be so, but it's in a residential area, a row of resident, residences.
Okay.
I think that we certainly understand, um, the board's comments relative to the garage. I think there, as, as Mr. Serrunian said, there's some changes that could potentially be made. Um, certainly relative to the front unit, that, that might be able to address that in a meaningful way.
Thank you.
I have a slightly different question. We've been assigning these projects to move forward next couple of weeks. Normally we meet on November 8th, which is election day. And we're attempting to move it up to November 1st. I didn't know that was finalized.
No, no.
But the fifteenth is there too.
No, that's town meeting.
So is there some reason?
Town meeting.
Fifteenth and the first? What, town meeting is fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
This can't be continued to the first either.
That's why it's the first.
This cannot be continued to the first though.
Later. What is it? The twentieth or?
Twenty second.
Twenty second would, would be the next opportunity.
Okay. So that'll give them ample time to come up with something, talking with the historic people, starting the ZBA process.
Historic.
And I, it's just, yeah, I think I said historic people, but it'll give them time to progress so that we may be more satisfied with what we're sitting and what we're seeing from site plan to design.
I was up there today and that's a great location, given the nature of that particular environment. I think that's a good, good project. But there are some issues that we've discussed.
Yeah. Hopefully, I think we can find a way to address some of these concerns.
Okay, so we're going to move this on to the twentieth of November.
Twenty second.
Twenty second.
Twenty second, I'm sorry. Got twentieth in my brain. Um, and we do have the request for a continuation of that because the drop dead on this is past.
Well, we have the decision deadline extension.
Yeah, that was, that was submitted.
Yeah, that was submitted.
You have to vote on that.
Oh, okay. It's here somewhere.
Good practice. Also, don't forget public comment.
Well, that's true. We're seeing this. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Who has a jet lag here?
We're here now.
I guess I do.
That's out of practice.
All right, where is Kevin's request for, here we go. He says, as we discussed, please accept this request for an extension to the decision deadline for the above referenced property until November thirtieth, 2022.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of accepting that?
Do we have a, do we have a meeting that dates?
Twenty second, yeah.
He's asking a question to the thirtieth.
It's just the decision deadline.
We have it right.
We just typically do it to the end of the month.
That's just the decision, okay.
Yeah. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we'll look forward to seeing that. Um.
If I may, you.
Public comment?
What?
Public comment.
That was just the extension.
Yes, thank you. Anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this? And please go up to the podium and state your name.
My name is, uh, Tony Petrucci, 243 Old Main Road, direct abutted to this. I just want to comment on the right of way and why. I've unfortunately had to become very intimately involved with it. That right of way only allows access to the back lot, if you read it carefully. They were trying to use it to gain, uh, access to 259. John Mara, whose land it runs over, would not allow that. So that driveway is not going to change. The right of way will go to two, two sixty-three in the back, but cannot go, cannot be used for 259. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Are you commenting on 237?
No.
Yes. Please go up to.
Not 237.
No, I'm sorry. This is 259, 263 Old Main Road. Okay, so.
We handled it already.
Yeah, we've handled 237 already. Okay, anybody else who wishes to comment on this plan? Okay, thank you. And we'll look forward to this on the twenty second.
Continue to the twenty second of November?
Yeah, but because it's a site plan review, we don't. Yes, ma'am?
Would it be possible to make a comment on 237?
We've already closed that.
Cannot. This is 237?
No.
No.
This is 259, 263.
Okay, okay. And then we go to the applicant Blue Moon's.
I think we just need a vote to continue to the twenty second. I think we, you voted to the extension.
We already did. We don't usually, because it's site plan review, so we just.
The twenty second works for the applicant.
Sure.
Only a couple of days before Thanksgiving. Just want to make sure.
I'm, I'm going to be here that night anyways.
We may or may not have turkey that evening.
I'm not going to close everything. Don't touch my business.
I plan to.
I've done this before. I've done this before.
I just put everything up here that you said.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, we're looking at Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc., site plan review application to develop a class one restaurant with outdoor deck. And Paul, you have some notices.
Chairman, chair, the, uh, meeting notice for the Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc. was published on October 7th, 2022, and 25 abutted as were notified by regular mail.
Okay. And as part of the packet of information, we have a memo from attorney Ahmet dated October 21st and he's getting set to talk to us about this. Yes.
Members of the board, I'm Bob Ahment. I'm a Falmouth attorney and I represent the Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc., a Massachusetts corporation that was formed for the purpose of establishing and operating a restaurant at 159 Main Street, which is right at the entrance to Town Hall Square. So if the blinds were open, we could look down and we'd see that property. It's a property I'm very familiar with because my office is right next to Town Hall and so I go past the proposed restaurant site all the time. Uh, the principal of Blue Moon Sea Grill, Inc. is Ed Rishardi. He's the manager of the LLC. Ed is here. His, uh, son John is here. Uh, John would be managing the restaurant. Is involved now in the management of Sopranos at the casino. The Rishardis have a long history of operating restaurants in Falmouth and in Mashpee very successfully. So I thought what I would do is first just describe what we'd like to do on the property and then talk about what permits are required and why, and why we meet the requirements. Um, keeping in mind that this is a site plan review and we do need special permits for the application to be fully approved, which I'll, uh, discuss. But what's in front of you is an aerial photograph from 2021 from the town records and it shows the, um, building right here. This is Town Hall Square, the entrance which came in tonight. There's a sidewalk along, uh, Town Hall Square and then some landscaping owned by the town. And then between the landscaping, uh, well, next to landscaping on the way in down there is a stone wall. And the town's land ends at the outside of the stone wall and then variously eleven to fourteen feet from that wall is the building in question. So, um, this line of the building is paralleling the town's This is a survey, a plot plan of the property in, um, in question. Um, the lot boundaries are, as I've shown here, this is the boundary along Town Hall Square. On the plan, you can see right in here, the wall is shown. Presently, there's a walkway that extends to steps that go down to this way that's between the property line and the, uh, building, building. Um, portion of it, that would be the restaurant, this area. It's been known forever as 159 Main Street. It was for decades, the Vincent Associates, uh, real estate office on the upper level, law offices on, uh, the lower level and, um, for a while in the rear, um, on the upper floor. Uh, but the property also includes 155 and 153, um, Main Street, both of which, um, are presently retail stores, but over the years have been different things, including a yogurt shop fairly recently. Um, the engineering department says that these properties need to be known as, um, 153, Unit A, Unit B, and Unit C, despite the forever street addresses. So apparently that will need to change. Anyway, this is an eight thousand and some square foot lot along Main Street with about seventy-four feet of frontage. The proposal to turn this area, about twenty-five hundred square feet on the upper level, uh, into a quality sit-down seafood restaurant. And it's, uh, this is a floor plan of the proposed restaurant, kitchen area and toilets in the back, uh, indoor dining in the, um, back on the, um, south east side, a bar area with more interior seating, a total of seventy-four seats inside. And actually, the calculations shown on the plan by the architect and reviewed by the building commissioner, uh, would allow for eighty-eight seats, um, inside under the state building code. We're only asking for seventy-four seats, propose seventy-four in, inside. But the proposal is to install, to construct within that fourteen-foot, eleven to fourteen-foot wide area between the building and the, uh, Town Hall, an exterior dining deck. Um, and we show it as having, um, I think it's, uh, fifty-six seats on the outside, which brings the total seats for the restaurant to one hundred and thirty. There is a handicap ramp that would be, uh, built in, leading from Main Street up to the, uh, first floor level, which is an improvement, uh, providing handicap access for the proposed use. And presently, the, um, area that would be filled, which is shown here, is not very attractive. It is a sloped area, um, and, um, we think will be greatly improved in appearance. I've included a couple of other pictures of the building from Town Hall. This is the front of the, um, the building on Main Street. Horiuchi and Celine has prepared, um, the renderings that are, um, in front of you now. Um, this is a bird's eye view that shows the, uh, the deck, the handicap ramp, uh, new doors leading to the inside of the restaurant, steps down, uh, from the rear of the, uh, deck to the rear of the, uh, property. The restaurateur proposes to close off that walkway, um, across the town property that leads down onto the, um, proposed restaurant property and to landscape the area. Now, that will require a license from the, uh, select board, of course, to do that work on the town property. Uh, there won't be any access to the deck off of that, but the goal is to make it beautiful. Um, so the details of that, although some are shown on, uh, the plan already done here by, um, Horiuchi and Celine, would be worked out with the, uh, select board for beautifying that portion of the entrance to, uh, Town Hall Square, which presently isn't, um, particularly attractive. There would, uh, there are currently benches, but there would continue to be benches. Also a proposal over, um, on the south side to, uh, put a bike rack there. So, um, that again would require a license from the select board and, uh, review by the town, um, different departments to allow that to be approved. And the intention, although again, subject to terms of a license, uh, would be for the restaurant to, um, assure the continued maintenance of, of that area to keep it looking great. Horiuchi and Celine also prepared this, uh, rendering of a, of a view from, uh, Horiuchi and Celine also prepared this rendering of a view from Town Hall, and you can get an idea that the deck would be at the first floor level. The landscaping would then be a little bit below it and rising up against a railing. And that's present, the plan that That's pretty much what we want to do. Let me tell you now about the relevant regulations that are required. Did you have a question?
I do. Before you go forward, there's something I don't understand. Here in the, in the plans that we've got, the paper plans, you haven't shown it there. There appears to be an upper level floor plan that shows five offices.
Now, there's a lower level, there's a lower level plan, not an upper level plan, and that's a basement, which will only be used for restaurant storage. And so if you're looking at the new plans, there's no use below other than for the restaurant, for storage and a single 10 by 12 office for the restaurant, and no public space to it.
I get it now. Thank you.
And Bob, the plans for the deck, are there plans to have heaters out there, or how long a use do you anticipate for the deck since we're new?
The present plan doesn't have heaters, and I don't think that that's been decided on the length of the season. But it might be worth my seeing if John Rishardi has a different answer or wants to elaborate on that. Any thoughts?
I'll just use it during the summer.
Okay. So the plan at this time is not to have it be into the colder season. The plan before you, this elevation plan, doesn't show it, but we're proposing lighting, of course. Goose neck lamps. I today sent a picture of the proposed fixture provided by the architect, and I sent it to the planning board today, and it didn't get into these pictures to show you. But of course, there will, and there probably will be six of those lights on the facade of the building.
And I just have one other question before you go forward with the more technical things. You're proposing, there's a basement level, and there's a one-story restaurant.
That's correct. And no seating in the lower level.
Right. And I'm wondering why the owners are not considering a second story and a half where they could have housing of some sort. Seems a missed opportunity.
So you're asking about the possibility of putting a second floor on the building with apartments?
Right.
First of all, you know, I don't know what the structural capacity of the building is. I simply don't know. I also know that Blue Moon Sea Grill is a tenant with rights to use the first floor and the second, that is, the lower level and the first floor. But that's a real question that would have to be asked to the owner of the property, who's not the applicant. But what's before you is a restaurant. Could there be apartments in the building? It might be possible to get a couple, but I don't know the answer to that. Now, a restaurant, and this is a Class One restaurant, that is, it's not disposable plates. It's local, not a chain restaurant. Under the table of standards for determining the classification of restaurants, this would be a Class One restaurant. And Class One restaurants are permitted by right in the Business One District, that is downtown. So the use itself is not an issue. In addition, the zoning bylaw provides that parking is not required for any businesses in the Business One District on Main Street. That is, parking spaces on-site are not required, provided the lot coverage by structure does not exceed 60%. That's Section 240 104 of the zoning bylaw. So if we merely had the restaurant in the building with no expansion of it, no parking requirements would apply because the present lot coverage is only about 58%. If the way next to the building were level and suitable for putting tables on, if it was a fairly level sidewalk, one could do that, and you wouldn't need any parking because parking on Main Street in the Business One District is not required unless lot coverage by structure exceeds 60%. That's the bylaw. If instead of creating a deck, we regraded that whole area, I suppose with a retaining wall or by cutting down into it or something like that, again, that wouldn't be expanding the structure, and under the zoning bylaw, no parking would be required. What we're proposing to do, however, is to create, at least for the term of the lease, which is 15 years, a deck. That will be a very attractive deck, especially with the landscaping around it, and will be a very pleasant place to be able to dine outdoors. But that is structure, and that does increase the lot coverage. And if we build the deck as proposed, the entire length of the building, leading to stairs down at the rear, the lot coverage will be 73.8%. Only 70% lot coverage in the Business One District is allowed by right. 70%, we're asking for 73.8%. And that can be allowed by special permit from the planning board, which we have applied for, and which I believe will be scheduled for hearing on November 22nd, to allow that increased lot coverage. There are certain standards that need to be met. We've provided information from Falmouth Engineering about soil loss and stormwater runoff and the like. We think we meet all of the tests so that the planning board can grant that special permit to allow that much lot coverage. We won't be increasing the lot coverage, overall lot coverage, that is, by pavement at all, because the area beneath that way, although it's being overgrown now, has been all paved in the past. But it would still be 73.8%, and lot coverage of 90% is allowed by right in the Business One District for overall lot coverage. But if we have more than 60% lot coverage as proposed, let alone 73.8%, which requires a special permit, if we're over 60%, as we add this deck, then we do have to comply with parking requirements because 240, Section 104, doesn't apply if you have more than 60% lot coverage. And that's why we would need a special permit to reduce the parking required, in fact, to waive it altogether. And that's a special permit that can be granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the hearing on that actually opens Thursday of this week. So we have that coming up. Now, this is not a particularly large restaurant with 74 seats inside and 56 seats outside, a total of 130. Estia, a little bit to the west, has 194 seats. The information given to us by the select board's office, the town manager's office, was 194 seats inside and 68 seats outside. Cucino Solare has 128 seats, not counting a tent where seating is allowed in the rear, 25 more seats. La Savetta, the closest restaurant to our proposed location at 131 Main Street, has 83 seats, not counting their outdoor seats. And so on. There are, besides Estia and La Savetta to the west, and three restaurants across the street from this location, within 1,000 feet of Town Hall Square going east, there are eight or nine restaurants. I guess the, whether it's eight or nine depends on, if you count the French Bakery as a restaurant, which it was approved as, with a special permit reducing the parking requirement. Same also was allowed for Divine Pizza. There was a special permit granted for Estia to be able to have those 194 seats inside plus seats outside with only, I believe it's up to 16 parking spaces. I don't know if that many really behind the former bank building. And the decision of the Board of Appeals is important in that case, really echoing the language that's in Section 240 104 of the bylaw about why parking requirements are waived on Main Street because of the desirability of encouraging growth and the availability of public parking in the area. The Board of Appeals found that expansions of restaurants or businesses and change of uses along Main Street have not been required to come before the Board of Appeals, and the board has determined that parking on-site and public parking in downtown is appropriate for the change from the bank to the restaurant. The Board of Appeals went on, the board finds that there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on Main Street that may not travel to Main Street by personal automobile and maybe via public transportation, walking from nearby homes and motels and by bike. And the board find that it's also most likely that another restaurant downtown will offer another venue as a choice for dining by individuals coming to visit the downtown area but will not increase traffic. And we think all those findings would be appropriate in this case and consistent with Section 240 104 of the zoning bylaw. The Falmouth Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter to the Select Board a few months ago when the Select Board was asked to approve the increase in sewer flow to the, from a restaurant, which the Select Board unanimously approved. And I think because it sums up these arguments, it's worth reading the letter from the president of the Chamber of Commerce. He says, "John Rishardi, a seasoned restaurateur in Falmouth, a longstanding member of the Chamber, has reviewed with us the plans for Blue Moon Sea Grill. The Chamber supports Mr. Rishardi in obtaining all necessary permits and enthusiastically submits this letter on his behalf. The location and design, particularly the proposed outdoor dining deck, will be very attractive addition in the town's downtown business center. The continuous renewal and vitality of Main Street is of utmost importance to our business community and to the town in general. We respectfully urge the Select Board to continue to allocate available sewer capacity to this area. The Chamber is proud that Main Street is busy in the summer, and we understand that traffic and parking are issues of concern. Accordingly, we're collaborating with Main Street business owners to address these issues in ways that will contribute to the vitality of the community. We do not think that another quality restaurant will significantly increase traffic or parking needs as potential customers are already here. The additional restaurant may allow residents and tourists wanting to dine downtown to be seated more efficiently, with less weight than our visitors often experience, and as a result, parking spaces may turn over more quickly." That's the letter which we submitted with a copy of our application some weeks ago to the board. Now, this is the site plan review hearing. There's not a whole lot of site to look at here because in the Business One District, there are no front or side yard setback requirements, which is why the building extends all the way up to the sidewalk and why the proposed deck extends all the way to the property line. And that's also intended to fill in that area, and we don't want there to be gaps between that structure and the town. So we'll be working with the town with regard to any license required because it's not an even property line because it's a stone wall. So there might be little bits of encroachment to make sure it comes right up to the line. So as I said, there's not a lot of, in our opinion, site plan issues. I do note that the deck is on top of an area which does not drain well now. We won't be increasing any runoff. We're thinking of, as suggested in the engineering department's referral, removing the hard-packed surface and putting gravel on there, which will actually be an improvement in terms of slowing the water that comes through the deck and drops down to the surface below. Now, as shown on the plan, the location of the proposed deck is in an area that's labeled "Way." It's labeled "Way" on the Land Corps plans, and it's, we've labeled it "Way" on our plans. And the "Way" extends along this southeast side of the property, and then there's also a way that extends to the property line along Lot 3, which is the coin shop. One doesn't usually fill in Ways. The, and before doing so or proposing to do so, of course, we examine the title very carefully. The owners of properties with rights in the Way are indeed the coin shop and this property, which is owned by Gelphi Trustee, 149 Main Street. They have both consented to the installation of the deck in the Way. Their licenses to occupy the Way are recorded at the registry of deeds, and copies have been submitted to the town. Questions have been raised about rights in the Way and access to the rear of the property. And I understand only from reading the staff's report today that Town Council has been asked to weigh in on those issues. And we'll have more to say about that and provide title documentation to the Town Council in case he makes a referral to the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals on any of the title issues. And I may have more comments on that this evening and surely will later. But I'd rather respond to what others have to say and reserve the right to speak further to you about this. Happy to answer your questions.
Well, first, we'll have the board's comments, questions, whatever, and then we'll go to the public comments and questions. Anybody on the board wish to... Bob, you look like you're...
Yeah, no, I just think, I like the idea of ripping up the concrete and putting a deck over it and... deck over it and, you know, having a more pervious surface underneath it. It's something that restaurants have been doing. Estia is one of those that added to the front of the old bank. I can't find too many negatives to this proposal.
Paul?
I have two comments, Mr. Doman. One is, first plan by RIS Associates shows cross-hatched areas, and the one you mentioned is Gelfi's property. But the other two are two tenants apparently, Blue Moon, Golden Oyster, and the Rio Island Company. Are they part of this? Because the architectural drawings don't show them, and they're in the same building.
I think you're referring to, on this plan, these two stores. One is labeled one fifty-three, and one of which is labeled one fifty-five. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
They are in the, all in the same building. They are separately leased. They will, they're not affected by this proposal, and, but, you know, a typical downtown situation with multiple tenants in a single building.
The other comment is, I see a ramp coming up on the south side, and steps going down. My recollection is a high wall there, a strong wall there, and a bunch of dumpsters in that area. Is that implying people have to get off the ramp by going down through that area and entirely walk around the buildings?
Let me help out with, I thought we had a picture of the rear, and apparently not.
You don't show the back of it.
So, the area immediately behind the building, that is, this area, is free of any dumpsters or anything like that. There are dumpsters located behind, in this area.
There's a high stone wall on the south side.
The wall is, the wall is, the wall's along here. So, let's see which of these plans would be most helpful.
Meandering through the dumpsters.
To look at. While the "way" goes down, the deck, with the help of the handicap access ramp, is actually up. So, you'd be able to walk underneath, well, once you get to the back of the property, the elevation has dropped. Remember, it's a walkout, although there are no doors in the back, on the rear side. There are windows in the basement on the back. Is that helpful?
Looks like...
So, by the time you get to the back of the building to get off of that deck, which is at the first floor level, you'll have to walk down a set of stairs.
Looks like there are new windows.
Say again.
They look like there are new windows.
Well, there are now because the building has been substantially renovated over the last couple of years. Those renovations were all approved by the Historical Commission. We do have to go to the Historical Commission for the, because we're constructing this deck. And it's a mahogany deck, mahogany cap on the rail, but with a cable system for the, are they the balusters? I'm not sure. Horizontal. And there are a couple of new doors to be installed because presently, when you go into the side door of the building, you go up a few steps to the first floor and you go down a few steps to the basement. That will be eliminated. There won't be any access from the south side of the building to the basement. There'll just be a door off of the deck, two doors, one a double door, one a single door, which are shown on the plans. Double door here, single door here.
Personal comment. I always felt that property would be perfect for multi-use housing. If you store it below and apartments above, it's a great location for that, but unfortunately, it's not what you're proposing.
Well, it is, of course, the entrance to Town Hall Square is prime location on Main Street. It makes sense for it to be a business use property. There are, some residences on second floors along Main Street. There are some other residents in the area. The Oddfellows Hall nearby was turned into residences, but this is what this owner and tenant are working on.
I'd hate to see all our B ones turn into residential districts.
By the existing zoning, how many residential units could you put there? If it's six units per acre, how big is the lot?
It would only allow one unit, except that I think in a business zone, you're allowed a two by right.
Two by right. So, we could, we're talking about two possible units.
Pam?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up with that. I'm having a very difficult time hearing you. So, if you could just speak up a little louder.
I'll try, and I have a hearing problem, but I'm doing all right so far, I think.
Okay. So, I want to follow up with the units for housing. And if there is a possibility for you to add, or the builder, or whatever, the developer, two or three units on the top floor, I think it would be tremendously beneficial for the town. I mean, we're looking wherever we can to see where we could fit in where appropriate. We want areas that are developed where people can walk to, a job, walk to transportation, library, school, whatever, and you can't get much better than this.
But the applicant is leasing...
A way and a willingness.
Well, he said that he's just leasing the property, so he's not the owner of the property.
Yeah, he's not the owner. It's just a lease.
I understand that. But you're in contact, obviously, with the owner. And if possible, to add some dwelling units, it would be wonderful.
It'd be sweet, but I don't think we can do it.
So, to be clear, it's a maximum of two we could get here. I'm trying to get my arms around that, right? Two, you're saying there could be two units under the existing zoning.
I believe that that's correct.
But remember, the building underneath is going to have to be able to support another floor.
Oh, they'd have to redo the whole building, put in tiles. Tear it down and start over again, is what you'd have to do.
It has to...
I mean, we're kind of off agenda...
It has to make financial sense. You'd end up, you might end up having to take the building down.
Yeah.
A little bit of the building is in the flood zone. Does that mean the whole thing would have to be elevated?
Yeah.
No, it's just...
Okay, we need to go to the public for any comments.
We've got fourteen units being built on Main Street.
Before we do that, Bob, I wonder if you could go back to the, I think it's down below, actually, to the rendering that shows the side of the building with the new windows and the, nope, going the other direction. Keep going. Keep going. There. Right, uh, uh, right there, right there. That's where the deck is going to go.
Oh, yes.
And I'm trying to understand the deck. So that the deck, on the left-hand side of the deck, will be a ramp going up...
You see the yellow line?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that yellow line is, but...
It doesn't line up with the stone wall.
That's where there would be a deck that would go up.
Well, let's say you are correct, that your effort is to fill in that space, leave no gaps, make it tidy, and one side of it's going to be the ramp. The other side of it, the right side that's against the building...
Yes.
Is going to be at what level? Will that be...
It will be at the same level as the first floor inside, so you can see some couches there. It's about a, probably a foot, sixteen inches below the bottom of those windows.
So, that will have a railing up at the same level as the first floor, right?
Sure.
Okay, it didn't show that in the elevation. It shows it all at the ramp level.
As best we can.
Yeah.
Shows here, this cable system railing. But as I said, a mahogany cap on top of it.
Okay, and if you could go back to the one we were just looking at.
There's the railing again.
There it is.
Those fixtures here, these, these will all be moved. So, the ramp, I believe, will be five feet wide. That will leave about seven and a half feet wide enough for a row of tables along here, and then the ramp ends somewhere around here, and then the rest of the deck would be available for dining.
Will be filled in. And I'm wondering, because I can't, from the, from the elevation, the drawing, the elevation would appear that you're going to leave it as a, the appearance of a flat-roof building. Is that right? It won't have any overhang?
Yes, I actually, workers were at the building last week. There was a ladder against the building. I asked them if I could go up on top of the building. They held the ladder. And I wanted to see the top of the building. It is mostly, pretty much flat. It's not entirely flat. I wanted to look at if you could put the deck up there, as is being proposed above another restaurant downtown, and it would seem entirely possible, but then you get into elevators and everything else. It's very difficult issues. So, it is, the back of the building is not a flat roof, although you may not be able to see structure from the street, from...
So, there's no plan at all to put any sort of the appearance of an overhang on that, on that roof line, or any kind of trellising over the deck? Anything to soften that very abrupt facade?
Well, keep in mind, the Historical Commission approved all the work that's just been done over the last year there, but having said that we could take a look at that someday, the idea of an awning over a dining might make a lot of sense. So, a lot of, you know, this is a good-sized deck. It's a very substantial project. It's a very expensive proposition, and there may be some bells and whistles that in the future we could do but aren't presently planned.
Well, this is a very harsh facade, the way it's being planned.
Well, it's not being planned. It exists. It's just been approved by the town, and it's been the way it is for decades.
So, you're, it would appear that you're planning to make some changes there.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Charlotte?
They're putting, those windows are becoming sliding glass doors? Is that what I saw on the plan?
No, no, the windows all stay. There will be one door that's...
Closed off.
That would be in this location, and then this, which is presently the door that, as I said, goes in at the middle of the building. This will, I believe, be increased in height, and there'll be a double set of doors fitting in there.
I think the deck is an attractive idea. That's a good thing to do, leaving that the windows are okay. It's just the harshness of that facade without any kind of overhang or trellis or something to soften it.
We can look at making a change there. Again, it's historic district.
Yeah.
Been approved. It's not new. I think just the, just the six gooseneck lamps are going to be a nice touch, but there may be more we can do. We're not opposed to it.
Okay, now we really do have to move on.
Yeah, I've heard enough.
Anybody from the public wish to ask questions or comments? Please go up and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Mary Downey. Can you all hear me? Can you hear okay?
Remember, the microphones were at home. Doesn't have an effect in this room.
Oh, okay. All right. So, thank you. I'm representing the condo owners, and they are behind Main Street. They are one thirty-seven Main, and they are impacted by this project. There have been title issues regarding the "way" that have been omitted from the presentation today. We have title examinations and land court registered plans that show the "way" that you have seen here. I don't know how to do any of this, and I just wonder if we could show the "way" again. Do you have a plan with the "way," Bob?
I've only got what you've seen, but maybe one's better than...
I have paper plans...
Need to get the...
That show...
So, there's this one.
Existing conditions plan, shows the "way."
That's somewhat helpful.
Yeah, all the way up to the top.
As best I can do.
Let's see, okay, thank you.
Well, the existing conditions...
Well, I think this one, the main, this plan is helpful. So, you can see that this is an established land court plan that we actually have, and we will get this to you if you don't have it, but this is depicted on document number two zero five zero zero A, and we'll provide that to Town Council or anyone who needs it. And my clients have a land court, Plan of Land one one three two two B, which shows the, their existing "way." So, this lot of land, it's one block on Main Street, is, it's two Ls that meet, or a U shape. So, there's no, nothing in this plan that is explaining how this restaurant is going to be serviced from the back without completely utilizing the "way" that is on my client's side. So, if, I don't know if any of you have been back there, but I would invite you to walk back and to drive back there. You can come down by La Savetta and go into the back, and then up again beside Vincent's. And those "ways" are established, and I believe those "ways" would have to be extinguished in the land court to put a permanent structure. It's still considered a structure to put the deck on top of this "way." What it does is overburden the "way" by John's Shoe Store, and all of the servicing would have to come in behind and go over the condominium easement and "way," and this, and they'd have to turn around back there. There have, there hasn't been any alternative to how they would service the restaurant. They have a planned loading dock here in the back where, let's see, what I see is Lot Three. There's a new landing, and I have another plan that I saw, Bob, that had a loading dock. Are you aware of the loading dock back there? It doesn't seem to show on here, but we've had many documents that we've been reviewing, and, but I would say that these are land registration office "ways," and that to extinguish the "way" that has been in existence for about a hundred years from what we have. We don't have a certified title. We have a portion of a title search from Mr. Riccardi's representative, and that does say that there appear to be, there's a rather complex description of these "ways." Well, that's not enough. There are pertinent "ways." The whole lot back there is dependent on having two "ways." And most prominent would be "fire," to get a fire truck down there, some hoses over, fire truck or an emergency vehicle on the... Fire truck or an emergency vehicle on the other side. The potential for worse congestion than they already have exists here. And it is a fire and safety, as well as just the ongoing use that is appropriate for residential housing that's back there. And you're talking about more residential housing in any of that area. But this is 100-year-old. The deeds that we have are 1925. And that has a 1910 reference that we haven't been able to obtain yet. Let's see, already, and I don't want to get into this too much, but there's a bit of a carnival atmosphere downtown. And this is, there's a potential for this project to add to that. Now, they say a Class 1A restaurant. If you look, I guess I'm going to have to try this. No, I bet not. I wanted to get to the restaurant. But there's a prominent bar. It's really a barroom with tables. And so many of the tables are dependent on extinguishing this way. If, they wouldn't have any parking problems if they just didn't take over the way. You could still beautify the way or do something, like you said, from their structure for an awning or something. But not extinguish the way. Not take away from what has been there and how the block from 141 through 159 has operated for 100 years. I would say the town also, in 1984, was granted an easement by one of the owners of the Vincent, it was called something else at the time. But there's a sewer easement there for perpetual, for piping and for repair, whatever needs to be done. And also other utility Verizon or whoever the utility workers are. The town easement is quite important. They have, the sewer is right there. How are they going to access that? How are they going to get underneath? I have the site for that. And I sent over by email, I think, or fax to the engineering department with that easement. If you'd like a copy, I'll get a copy to you as well. It really is, by blocking this way, all of the burden to get behind Main Street on that block is on the other way. That's La Civetta, that's Eugene's, and Bean in the Cod, and 137 Main, which is a condominium. And there'll be trash, there'll be deliveries, there'll be laundry services, there'll be employees. There'll be employees who have to run in and park for a minute. One of the owners will tell you that she's already been hit. Her car's been hit by Carvosa trying to turn around back there. There are many problems. It's very tight. That area cannot be serviced unless there's an alternative method of getting into the back of that restaurant. But right now, it just blocks the whole of that way and changes this continuous use that has been safe and it has been fair. Both sides have ingress and egress. And maybe if they could scale back the seats in the restaurant and make the bar a little smaller, we wouldn't have all of these problems. But I think that, I hope I covered just about everything. It's really quite simple from my client's point of view. It's safety, access, ingress, egress, that when they purchase their property, the ways and the land court plans, none of these plans do this. The ways all have arrows. What do the engineers, they don't put something there if it's not necessary. All of the ways have arrows going toward the other ways, in both directions. And I think that it's really a land court decision if this way is to be extinguished. And I want to see if anyone has any questions or if anyone wants to come up and speak.
Does anybody wish also to add more to this discussion?
You're welcome to, or to just give me a cue if I missed something.
And please state your name.
Here, I'll stay right here.
For the record, my name is Richie Metha. I'm the owner of 137 Unit B with Linda Semortis. I'm a business owner right across the street from 159. We've been at our current location for about 30 years now. And as a business owner, I welcome business in town. But as a landowner, this project would strip away what has been a right-of-way, a continual use for almost 100 years now. We were told by the outgoing owners that there was an easement in place. And, you know, before they sold to us, they were approached by the current owner in selling them the easement back. Daily, our right-of-way gets blocked between five and 15 times a day. And that could be from five minutes to 20 minutes at a time. I actually sent some pictures to the board showing just what it, you know, looks like having our way blocked. So we, as have previous owners in the past, have relied on this right-of-way in question. I'm going to have some fun here. It's the first time playing with that, okay? With this right-of-way, this is a driveway. It's a right-of-way. It's in use. We haven't used it much recently because when they did the construction, it is full of nails there. So you're probably going to lose a tire or two. So we've used that for those circumstances when our driveway has been blocked. And again, the pictures have been provided. We've used it to go to work, go to doctor's appointments, and all other aspects of our lives. I'm just very concerned about the burden it would add to our right-of-way. We feel it would significantly enjoy the enjoyment of our property and would be a great loss of value to the property we just purchased. I'm torn because I do welcome business in town. But I do see this as a major burden on our rights of enjoyment of the property. We do have rights and interest in that way. Thank you very much, Richie Metha, 137 Main Street, Unit B. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Got some question? Can I see where 137 Main Street is on this plan? Is it even shown?
Oh, I can explain that. I'm the co-owner of 137 Main Street along with Richie Metha. I'm Meg Maggio. I think the back of this building, this is our second appearance here. The first one was with the water variance hearing. And I think that the back of this building, the all-important back of this building has been conveniently omitted from this presentation. And when you see the congestion that this one block creates already, the existing congestion from 159 to Austeria La Civetta. So from Town Hall Square until Austeria La Civetta is one block. And that block, there's several residential units and several commercial units who all have legal rights to the back behind of that building. And that's been perfectly amicable. Everyone has their easements. Everyone knows where they have a right-of-way. And that already is extremely congested all year round with Carvosa dumpsters, with, I think it's a very risky piece of property as far as fire access. The alleyway between La Civetta and the old John's Shoe Store is a very narrow alleyway. It was never sold to us as a single access point. It was sold to us as a U-shaped way that allowed two points of entry and exit. And that has already been severely tested with timber, with new retail, and with just, you know, the COVID extra traffic that we've all enjoyed in the business community. However, adding 130-seat establishment, plus, don't forget, probably 30 to 40 employees, creates an enormous amount of congestion for one small block in the historic district of Main Street. And I don't understand, when there's so much empty space on Main Street, why we want to make this area even more congested. And I ask you all to please go walk in the back of this building. Because when you walk in the back of this building and you see no photos of the back, I have no idea how they're going to deliver their goods, how they're going to take out their trash, how they're going to have fire safety, sanitation, environmental protection. There's no room behind this building for an operation of this size. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin?
May I say one more thing?
Of course.
My clients have not owned their property for more than one year. They bought this property from the Marzats with the understanding that they had these two ways and the land court plans that came with their deed. And that's a very significant matter because it turns out that this property has been, they've been working on this development. I saw our plan back in August at least of last year. And that was before my clients purchased their property. So it is unfortunate that this was known, but it was never revealed to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Klauer, I'd like to offer some clarification. I actually represented the Marzat family in the sale of these condominium units. I handled the deregistration of that parcel from the land court. So I'm very familiar with that particular piece of property. We went through a deregistration process, which entails a very long title review. And it was established that there is a right-of-way that's pertinent to 137, but it is not this right-of-way. It is the right-of-way between Eugene Henry's and Austeria. There is, this right-of-way has rights granted to the owners of this building and the Coin Store and the Gelfe property. That's it. There was never a representation made legally that there were any rights to the owners of 137 because there simply aren't. We established that during the deregistration process from land court title. It is, they have a right-of-way, but it is between those other two properties. It's the other right-of-way that runs between Eugene Henry and Austeria. There was never a representation made that there was a right-of-way running to the left of the Vincent Associates building.
And let me clarify a little further. There are, in fact, two rights-of-way pertinent to the condominium property. But neither of them is the way on the, is this way. The second way to the condominium property is the very narrow space that's between 149 Main Street and 145 Main Street. If you walk down the street, there is a small space. It's filled with exterior stairs and some equipment. I don't think you can even today walk through it. But that is the second easement, which is clearly described in the deeds for the condominium property. There is simply, and never has been, an easement enjoyed by the condominium property by this. We have, over the past month or more, requested of the condominium owners that they provide the title references for their claim that they have easement rights. They have been unable to provide anything because there is nothing. We've actually sent to them the title work, the extensive title work we had done to analyze all of the easements for the properties, beginning with La Civetta running down to 159 Main Street. The Cattick, a national title insurance company, agrees with our conclusion as to the bank's attorneys who represented the Bogosian development when they bought this property. There simply is no easement. And the fact that the neighbors who have owned their property for a year may have been told something or understood when they were told there were two easements, maybe the seller misunderstood where those two easements are. I don't doubt the speaker's statement that they've, indication that they've driven through this easement, but I'm surprised. It certainly is not suitable for emergency access. It's a tight corner. But all of it is irrelevant. There is no easement. So unless the owners of the condominium units could prove in a court of law that they have established a prescriptive easement somehow for 20 years of uninterrupted use, they don't have these rights. On the other hand, we believe, well, it's, the access to the rear of this property and to 149 Main Street, as well as the others, has been through the easement that's between La Civetta and the Emporium shop at 145 Main Street. And we believe that's been used for decades and decades and decades. And that's the way the trash has been removed and the dumpsters are presently serviced. A dumpster truck does not get around through this easement. And that's the way it will continue to be. We're making, not talking about any changes to that, although I must acknowledge that a restaurant may have more use than other potential uses of the property than the offices may be. We would like to.
I think we're going to have to cut this off because.
Lady in the court wants to say something.
She says no.
Yes, she does.
Did you want to say something?
Really need to come up?
Please, come up. You've not said anything yet.
I thought she said no.
I understand. Those chairs are not the most comfortable to sit in for so long.
She doesn't want to walk, is the problem.
Been sitting here longer than you have.
Land courts should solve the problem. It's really not our issue, right? They do, they don't.
Good evening, board. My name is Linda Semortis. And I live at 137 Main in the condominium that we're talking about. And I have lived there, I'm in my 12th year, this last year as an owner with friend and colleague Richie Metha, Meg and Dave living next door to me. So I've kind of seen it all, you know? I've lived and worked in Falmouth for 40 years, previous to where I am now in West Falmouth. And I chose to go from West Falmouth to live in a fabulous condo in a parking lot, which I also said to the select board, involving timber, nefarious, noisy bar. I'm actually shaking because I'm feeling anxiety. You know, I believe, yeah, the restaurant is going to happen. You know, you're in the business. I was a business owner myself one time in town. I get it. But it all goes to that easement. I have used it many, many times, late for an appointment because we can't get out between La Civetta and Eugene Henry's. Amazon, UPS, liquor distribution. It's going to be more so with a restaurant. I mean, my. I mean, my car has been hit. Kavosa copped up to it, and the driver left a note on the car the first time. The second time, no note was left, just red paint, you know? So I paid for that one. But it's just going to be more of the same. And when Vincent was taken apart and Longfellow took over, the mess, the noise, the construction, I can't even imagine what it's going to be like constructing this. I don't know what else to say, you know? It's, I'm anxious. I'm nervous, you know? I figured I would die there. Do I have to move or do I have to put up with this? I'm a stone's throw from Timber Naughty, two stones' throw from Proposed Blue Moon. I see the back, maybe 20, 25 feet to the X-bar. I don't know how many feet to, two stones, you know, to Blue Moon. I can't imagine what the mess is going to be back there, never mind the parking situation. I mean, I've worked on Main Street all but once in 40 years, worked on Main Street except for one year. So I know what it's like. You all know what it's like. That's all I'm going to say. I'm tired. I know you guys are tired. I see it in you. You see it in me.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I think we need to continue this.
Could I talk?
I have one more consideration. I did just come into the case in the last week. And Bob mentioned that my clients have not proved to him that they have title. And easement and a way is a very different entity. And this is trying to extinguish the way. Does Bob have title proof that he has right-of-way where La Cervetta is? If they do not have right-of-way where they have relied on at Vincent's, then what gives them Bogosian, Blue Moon, the right to say that they have a right-of-way through La Cervetta? Does everyone see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
I think Charlotte suggested, and I agree. I think we need to see this with our own eyes. I think we need to schedule a site visit.
Trying to drive it.
We also sent everything to Town Council. They have all of the documentation. They're looking at it.
Good.
So they can weigh in on whether or not there's rights, what rights, whose rights, whatever. But if you do want to go see it, I can set up a site visit.
I think we need to get a picture of what is being talked about here, okay? So I think we also need to move on.
Can I just, a quick question too?
Jim?
It's interesting. If you looked at the Falmouth Enterprise a couple of weeks ago, there was a picture of Main Street right in front with the old Shirley's Bar, which is the building we're talking about.
That's right.
Okay, Jim?
I just got a question. Was this previous land court?
Yes.
Okay.
It is still land court.
I thought, now it's deregulated? Now it's not land court anymore?
Only the condominium has been dysregulated prior to the sale to the...
Prescriptive easements don't work on land court. I'm just trying to understand what we're talking about here.
But it's a way. It's not just who has easement. It is a way.
Jim, this has been turned over to Town Council.
Yeah, we'll let them deal with it.
And they will look at it.
I was just trying to understand what was said. That's all.
We should just do clear of that until we get more information.
Let's see what Town Council says.
I can see us, I can see the utility of us having a site visit so we can picture in our minds what's being talked about here. And so at some point in time, okay? Thank you.
Do you want to continue it tonight?
I don't know because right now, last meeting, we're gone beyond that.
And... They are before the planning board on November 22nd for their special permit that Bob mentioned before. He filed that the other day, so that's on for November 22nd. So we can continue it to that same date if you'd like, so it's all in the same agenda.
I think we should, don't you all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, November 22nd then.
You won't be here.
You won't be here.
We're leaving for New York on Tuesday.
Can't help it. It's going to be a special permit hearing.
Right, and I think, so I understand that, you know, folks may not know what their plans are for that week, but perhaps if you continue them at this point and it doesn't turn out that we're going to have enough for a special permit, we can communicate with the applicant and have them ask to continue.
I think that's likely considering Thanksgiving.
Two days away.
But moving forward, we should probably keep them on the same agendas.
It's fine. And then when we all said, no, we're not going to be here, then we'll have to change something, okay? Thank you.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you all for coming tonight and participating. We have planning board discussion, and that's in regard to the fall town meeting, precinct meetings.
So just for clarity's sake, the matter will be continued to November 22nd? And we will communicate with the applicant if that's not...
Well, do you think, since it is a special permit, you do need five members to vote? Do you think you'll have a full complement on the 22nd?
Pam already said she can't be there. Is there anyone else who knows they're not going to be here?
I'm not sure.
Unless I die.
Well, hang on. You don't get to do that, Bob.
Might be better to put it...
As the applicant, you can always request a different date if you so desire.
I think we'd request the next available date after that, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Who goes December what?
Christmas Eve.
Says you haven't advertised it yet.
December 13th.
We can talk about it.
December 13th?
Yeah.
Okay, so continue to December 13th.
Is that okay with you, Bob?
If that's the next available date.
And do you want your special permit to be on that date?
What's that?
Do you want your special permit to be open on that date as well? So they're both together.
Sure.
December 13th it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so... We have the precinct meetings, town meeting, and you can see that Jed is planning to attend them.
As many as I can.
I understand.
Yeah, so just like last, gosh, when was this? This was last November. If the board members want to discuss when you may be available to attend these precinct meetings, obviously, we've got recertification attempt number two. So it's very important that we try to get the word out and answer any questions at those meetings. So if you want to have a discussion about who can attend which ones, I currently have a conflict on November 3rd. So I will not be able to make precinct date night.
Yeah, you always go to one and two. Charlotte goes to five, six. Hey, can you guys move so we can finish our meeting, please?
Hammer them.
Yeah.
I can do them all except precinct three.
Please move so we can finish our meeting.
I would have done it further. I was just kidding. I kept asking to use the head. Different styles.
That's the only way that they were...
No, I know. I follow an example.
They don't respond if you don't do it.
I know. They weren't listening, so hey.
Pat, I can make them all except precinct three because there are two on the table. And I'm going to five and six. That's my own precinct.
I might be able to go to three. I went to that before.
All you do one and two?
Oh, okay.
I don't know. I don't have my calendar here, so I'm going to put me as question.
Is anyone going to do precinct three?
I'm going to try. I don't have my calendar, so I don't know.
Okay.
So I've got my name down with a question mark on it.
Okay. Anyone else for precinct three on November 10? Anyone for eight and nine?
I can do all the others and plan to do all the others. I just can't do two on the 10th, and I'm going to five and six. That's my own precinct.
All right, so Charlotte, you...
Even the hammer didn't do it. Should I throw it at them?
I think they just went out the door.
Oh, okay.
Maybe not.
November 10. Thursday.
They're back.
November 10 at seven.
Seven?
I know we can't.
It's in November 6.
November 10. Okay, so Charlotte, you'll be at all of them except for one and two.
No, all except for precinct three.
Oh, how did I get that?
I don't know.
Okay, so all we're, we have a question mark for is precinct three. Pam might be able to go? Pat might be able to go? I'm sorry.
That's okay, Charlotte, because this is a ball of time. Hey, come on.
I can get the first letter. It's enough.
Okay, please tell me where. Are we going to have any committee reports tonight, please?
Can I ask you a question?
What?
Has there any been an indication of issues coming up with the planning board articles, town meeting?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, not one word.
But we skipped that part of the agenda where we're going to... Do you want to do that?
I don't know. What do you mean?
I thought it was on the agenda that I do at least, you know, go swiftly over what our plan is.
No, it's just a discussion of the precinct meetings.
Oh, okay.
We can add it to the next agenda if you'd like.
No, 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 no.
Okay, no announcements?
I did have one. So included in your packet is an announcement of an upcoming public workshop, which is why I have a conflict on November 3rd. So the town is updating their open space and recreation plan. And so on the November 3rd date, there's be a public workshop. There's also a public survey. So we ask for the board members if you could help us spread the word. We're working with the conservation department on this effort, and we have a limited timeframe, so anything you can do to help us spread the word would be great.
How about the recreation department?
Recreation part as well, yeah.
Jed, I was looking at the website this afternoon.
Yeah.
And I had heard that maybe you had to register for the Zoom meeting that you just advertised. That's a Zoom meeting. Do you have to pre-register for that or do you just need to know the link?
You do not need to pre-register. Initially, we thought that would be a good idea. However, you know, at the last minute, we sort of pulled that. So you just need to have the link. The link can be found on the planning webpage under Current Projects, Open Space and Recreation Plan, or simply by finding this flyer anywhere posted throughout town. We're posting it at the senior center, the recreation center, the library, post offices, et cetera. And you can just scan that QR code right there, and you can join the meeting or just simply put in that link.
It's very easy to find on the planning board website.
Yep.
It's right at the top, Flash News.
Yep.
We don't have any general correspondence. What we had, I think, all went to specific projects. Future agenda items.
I'd like to make a comment. I noticed on the motions, there's some very specific numbers put in there. For example, in HOE, it said the space is 1,127,224 square feet. I don't think you can measure it. That adds six significant figures. So why don't we just say approximately 127,200 or something?
It's a surveyed plan, so it comes out that.
But I've seen a court strike down something like that.
Because of coverage ratios.
The preciseness is not...
Yeah, we could...
That's a big number.
Kicks it up to a special?
Sure, we can put approximately...
Whole number or not.
When it comes to the cake pot commission.
Yeah. When you have bylaws that go specific to percentages of square foot.
So you're asking us to be less precise?
You've got to do it. It's math.
I don't think we can.
No, I think it's math is math. You've got to do it.
Could say approximately 127,220, for example.
We just put in what the applicant provides to us in the plans.
Yep. And if we do things on percentages, we have to...
You can't measure it.
Approximately is like maybe.
The number right now is 915.
Can somebody please move adjournment?
I moved it. We adjourned.
Thank you. Oh, in favor.